So getting started on the agenda, so Citizens Communication. So the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the Planning and Zoning Commission not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the Commission. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the Commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time in the open? All right, no persons wishing to speak in the Citizens Communication. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, the consent agenda, and will be enacted by one motion. The items include preliminary and final plats where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If any Commissioner desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, it will be moved to the regular agenda for further consideration. Are there any items the Commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda? And we did only have one item, Item Three A. All right, Item Three A on the consent agenda. This is approving the Planning Development Services FY twenty-five proposed fee adjustments. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing. The Commission welcomes comment on the following items. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. Item Four A, to receive public comment and consider an application to rezone approximately thirty-two point six one nine seven, that's very specific acres, from Planned Unit Development General Business One and Agricultural Development Reserve A to Planned Unit Development. The PUD is approximately thirty-two point six one nine seven acres out of the CS Parish Survey Number Two, Abstract Number Six Twenty-One, and the Suffolk-Island Survey Number One, Abstract Number Two Sixty-Five, generally located northwest of FM six eighty-five and East Piccon Street, known as the Downtown East Project Planned Unit Development District. And Michael Petrowski, Senior Planner, has the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's rezoning request is for the Downtown East Project PUD. The property is an estimated thirty-two acres northwest of FM six eighty-five and East Piccon Street. We are right across the street there from the HEB. So looking at the property and its history, the twenty-nine acre Fluger Track was first annexed in nineteen ninety-four. Three acres of the southern portion was annexed in nineteen sixty-five. It was then rezoned to Ag in nineteen eighty-four, and then a small portion was rezoned to GB One in nineteen ninety-nine. In two thousand and eight, the Fluger Track was rezoned to PUD, and that was initially intended to develop a mix of land uses. So looking at some of our neighbors, to the east you would have six eighty-five, the HEB with additional general commercial. To the south, we have Piccon Street, but the First United Methodist Church. And then we have residential development to the west and to the north. And then in the GB One section to the northeast, we have a car wash and a car service unit. So looking at how we got here today, in April of two thousand and twenty-two, City Council held a public meeting for Downtown East in which the vision of the project was shared and gathered with the community. They also had a resolution containing nineteen goals for the Downtown East Project. In June, Council held another public meeting in which they discussed public feedback, a revised comp plan, and began planning for the city hall. Council then voted to support a stakeholder committee to create a public-private partnership as well as establishing a master development plan for the Downtown East Project. In March of twenty-three, City Council entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Griffin Swinerton. This established the expectations of the partnership and the activities necessary to achieve the goals laid out by City Council. Then in fall of two thousand and twenty-three, City Council approved a preliminary development agreement for the development of Downtown East. And then after collaboration with City Council, city staff, various boards and commissions, the consultant team, a PUD for the Downtown East Project was submitted in March of this year. So looking at a summary request here of the thirty-two acres, it will have three zoning districts, starting with the seven parcels that are there in the orange. That is the Downtown East District. And then we have the Civic Plaza, which is in the green, centrally located to the development. And then we have Public Facilities District for the parks, trails, and open space. A land use chart has been provided, which establishes the allowable and conditional uses permitted here, along with the regulations for heights, which we may get into later, area, building placement, and impervious coverage. Some of the uses that you may expect in this area would be civic uses, entertainment, retail and sales, office, bar and restaurants, as well as multifamily. Looking at the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, there is both mixed-use neighborhood and parks and open space in this area. The mixed-use neighborhood intends to encourage vertical mixed-use while promoting a pedestrian-friendly experience. And then the parks and open space area aims to protect the existing environment while promoting connectivity to parks and the trail system. Further into the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, the city is broken down into neighborhood districts. This would be in the Central District, and that area is intended to develop public facilities, improve pedestrian safety with connectivity, and increase access to new and existing trails. So as mentioned earlier, the PUD proposed has three zoning districts, first starting with the Downtown East District shown in the orange. That's a seven-development parcel tract that's meant to support a mix of medium-high-density mixed-use development, which is going to be oriented towards the Civic Plaza or Main Street. The downtown project will include City Hall, a rec center, a plaza, an open space, multifamily, district parking, as well as a variety of commercial, retail, and restaurants. Anchoring the Downtown East Project is the City Hall, which is in Lot Two on the south side of Main Street. Both City Hall and the rec center will have orientation towards the Civic Plaza. City Hall is envisioned to be a multi-story office building with opportunity for cafes and community gathering space. And then the Recreation Center, which is in Parcel Four just to the east of the Civic Plaza, that will have ground-floor retail and restaurant space planned for the southern portion facing towards Main Street. And the rec center is envisioned to provide amenities for all members of the community. So the Downtown East PUD is intended to be built in three phases. We can see here in Phase One, we have the City Hall, the Civic Plaza, the Recreation Center, about twelve thousand square foot of retail and restaurant, which is shown in the red here, and an estimated six hundred parking spaces, both shown there on Parcels One, Three, and Six. We also see that Main Street extends from Railroad Avenue all the way to FM six eighty-five. Additionally, the initial first phase may have Parcel Five, which is the large green unit just to the west of Civic Plaza, have additional retail and entertainment, and that would provide additional surface parking. So the parking that you see in this image on Lots One, Three, and Six will be temporary to serve Lot One development. These lots, along with the majority of the Downtown East Project, will evolve over time as new uses and opportunities come onto the site. So the PUD is flexible and allows for a variety of uses. This is a full build-out illustration plan that shows one potential. You can see here there is multifamily in Parcels Seven and Six with a parking garage on the eastern end. We have standalone office use in the northeast corner. We have a hotel to the east of City Hall. We have a parking garage there on Lot Five with additional mixed-use commercials spread throughout the area. This plan is based on the understanding of the current market conditions and will change as new opportunities and new conditions present themselves. So the purpose of showing this is to display the flexibility of the project. The PUD has the ability to change with the market. The PUD does have city staff being present for a variety of conversations, including parking count and design appropriateness. And additionally, the PUD does have more stringent requirements on aesthetics, landscaping, ground floors, and frontages. So starting with the image on the right, you can see that, we're talking about building height now, you can see that the majority of the project has that sixty-five feet or five floors as the maximum allowed height. For Parcels One and Six, if you are within a hundred and seventy feet of FM six eighty-five, you are permitted the additional height of eighty-five feet or seven floors. And then if you look at the top of Parcels Seven and Six and to the west of Seven, you can see that if the property is within one hundred feet of the neighboring residents, you are limited to forty feet in height. The city had a stakeholder meeting on May sixteenth, and one of the biggest concerns that we heard were individuals on Lot Seven or Six looking down onto the neighborhoods. So in the first image here, this is looking north. It's kind of circled up on top there Cedar Ridge Drive, so we're in Parcels Seven or Six facing north. And you can see that we are limited to the forty feet in height until we get to the one-hundred-foot setback where we then may have the additional height. After the stakeholder meeting, it was added to the PUD to have required sightline screening, which you can see that the shrub on the third floor there, which is to help prevent the view looking down onto the neighbors, and that flat roof that it creates on the top that is non-occupiable space. And additionally, patios and balconies are not permitted on these parcels. And the same here, this is circled here Meadow Creek Drive, and this is if we're on Lot Seven facing west. And we can see here that the entire structure is setback well beyond the one-hundred-foot, and it is screened by vegetation. As mentioned before, the PUD does provide additional requirements for frontage. We're going to start with priority. That is in the red, and that goes along Main Street and the Civic Plaza. These floors, or these ground floors are built to be commercial and retail-ready. The building entrances will be constructed no further than fifty feet apart from each other, and fifty percent of the structures will have shading from awnings and canopies. Outdoor dining is encouraged, it's that middle image on the top that you see, throughout downtown, but in particular along these pedestrian priority frontages, where streets have the greatest combination of setbacks and sidewalks. And then looking on the right, we have the pedestrian-friendly, that's along C Street, and in between Parcels Seven and Six, that is also ground floor, will be built to be retail-ready. And then ground floor residential units should have their primary entrances from stoops and porches with direct access to the sidewalk. Then looking here in the green, we have the green frontages. Buildings along Gillian Creek will be providing ground-level uses with outdoor terraces or open spaces to have an outlook to this access. And then buildings with frontages along the neighborhood buffer to the north and west of Six and Seven there shall provide a visual overlook and have access to enhanced safety and activity in these green spaces. And as I mentioned on the previous slides, balconies and upper-level outdoor common areas are not permitted on these lots. And then we have the general frontages, which are there in the blue, and to the extent possible, we will try to have the ground-level uses. Where ground-level uses are not feasible, that is where they were looking to introduce murals, arts, additional landscaping there as well. For parking, as we showed on the Phase One, it will start with surface parking, but as the project develops, we will blend, starting to blend more into parking garages. So parking garages and parking within the mixed-use multifamily and commercial buildings are required to be predominantly encapsulated within, behind, or below the buildings so that it is screened from public view. Additionally, in the image on the left, you can see that along pedestrian priority and friendly frontages, ground-level parking garages have to be setback at least thirty feet, and that is to allow for ground-level uses. This is the Civic Plaza, which I mentioned that was shown in the green on the first map there. The Civic Plaza is centrally located. This is to include a limited amount of commercial activity intended to activate the space and serve as a principal gathering space for the Downtown East Project. This could include a outdoor gathering space, performance area, amphitheater, event lawn, shaded seating, splash pad, public art, as well as children's play area. It will include a mix of these uses. And then lastly, here we have the public facilities. Approximately nine and a half acres of the Downtown East District will be newly dedicated publicly-accessed open space. The PUD calls to extend the forty-mile trail system of the city of Flugerville into the Downtown East to provide both pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. Now we're looking at the transportation plan. We're going to start with Main Street, which is in the red, going from Railroad to six eighty-five. This is a seventy-foot right-of-way, forty-foot curb-to-curb. It will have twelve-foot travel lanes, and there will be eight-feet parallel parking on either side of the roadway. There will have a landscaping, eight-foot sidewalk, and an additional five-foot setback. The parallel parking and the landscaping will help with traffic calming. The goal is to have a visual corridor that will encourage drivers to drive at a lower speed. And then, as you see in the orange, we have B and C Street. These are about sixty-foot right-of-ways, thirty-six curb-to-curb, and those are ten-foot travel lanes, and those will also have the eight-foot parallel parking with landscaping and eight, no, I'm sorry, five-foot sidewalks there. And then here we are looking at D Street, which is that blue street that is going just to the west of the Civic Plaza. That is non-vehicle. That is a pedestrian promenade that is intended to serve walkability, traveling north to south, and complement the Civic Plaza. This road will be aligned on either end with trees and has a forty-foot right-of-way. It can accommodate emergency vehicles, food trucks, and in the event of a farmer's market, it can have the trucks or tents that they would have as well. And then for the road, this is along six eighty-five. This is just showing where you can see in the black stripe, that is the existing right-of-way of six eighty-five, as well as the additional red, which will be the future build-out of six eighty-five. So along this walkway, there will be a ten-foot shared-use path and twenty feet of open space and public utility easement. So in conclusion, the proposed PUD does support the mixed-use neighborhood future plans by incorporating vertical mixed-use. Most of the central neighborhood district by developing the northwest corner of Piccon Street and six eighty-five to support the public facility needs. We are increasing access to trails and improving pedestrian safety along major roadways. The PUD also supports the nineteen resolution items that were approved by the Council when considering the Downtown East Project. So in viewing the PUD's compliance with the comp plan and its unique design, staff has recommended approval of the PUD. Since this stakeholder meeting, I have only received one email of concern. It wasn't a formal, anything formal, it was just some concern. One was about illumination, and one was about vehicle entrance, so just to address those who are aware. Illumination will still be to the UDC standards, where you have to have zero-point-five-foot candle intensity at the property line, so there won't be spill over. And the lighting that is on-site will have to be screened or shielded, so it's downcasted. So if you are one of the neighbors and you're looking at the lights, you're not going to be staring at a bare bulb. And then for vehicular connection, we don't have any, there will be no connectivity there. And just extra information, the Main Street will be signalized. That concludes my presentation. The consultants here as well, I believe they have additional information and graphics to share with you, and staff is here to answer any questions in the head.
Thank you.
We did an excellent job. I don't think that there's much more. We did do, I could say, we did do an analysis, a visual analysis, from some of the backyards of Cedar Ridge and the Meadow Creek properties, and we could share those with you if that's appropriate. I don't know how to get that up here.
Just go down.
Okay. I mean, I think Michael's explained it very well. There were some guiding principles for this mixed-use project that are described here on this slide, really to create, as he said, a pedestrian-friendly district, one that could support a lot of different activities, family-friendly, and a site for major civic facilities like the New City Hall and the Recreation Center. The Civic Plaza is the key central element, open space of the area. And I think the idea here too with the city is to promote a fiscally responsible citywide economic development project. I'm not going to go through the zoning because I think Michael did that very well. I will flash through, these are some of the early images of the buildings that could happen here, the City Hall, the Recreation Center. These are evolving now and have changed somewhat from these images. Some images of the kind of scale of mixed-use, vertical mixed-use, in this case residential, that we see that could happen, especially on Lot Six and Seven. Possible hotel. The type of office space, three-story office space that we've envisioned along FM six eighty-five. The idea of a commercial recreational use that could happen adjacent to Civic Plaza. This is just one illustration of a possible use, the Camp Pickle, that has food and beverage as well as recreation, which we think would be ideal, an ideal type of use to help activate the Plaza and reinforce Downtown East as a destination. We talked about the heights, predominantly sixty-five feet stepping down to forty feet toward the neighbors, and as high as eighty-five feet or seven stories along FM six eighty-five. Michael explained the sightline provisions that we've added since our stakeholder meeting. And we did, it's important to note that we are preserving the existing tree line that exists along the edge of the property, which includes hackwood and hackberry and other tree species of twenty-five to thirty-five feet in high. So they create a pretty significant edge. This is just a crude model that shows the Cedar Ridge backyards adjacent to the planned development with its stepback and the existing trees. And this is the view just with the existing trees. But it's important to note that the development would include two additional rows of trees along the promenade and fire lane, which will act as a trail. And once we add those trees and their height at a five-year growth period, the views from the backyard would be predominantly blocked. We also looked at a couple of properties on Meadow Creek Drive. This one at four oh seven Meadow Creek, this is the view that currently exists. We had to color the building in red just so that we could see it. So this is just with the existing trees, predominantly obstructed. And then we also looked at four oh one Meadow Creek Drive, which has a yard that's a little closer to the building. This is with the existing trees, and then with the proposed trees that would be in the green way, again, the view to the building would be predominantly blocked. So that, I think, that those are the additional graphics that we prepared that can give you an idea of the proposal. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the additional effort you all put into in mocking those up, for sure, and the neighborhood engagement is certainly, certainly critical. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak at the public hearing this evening? All right, seeing as there are none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments, discussion?
Since we ended on trees, I'll begin on trees. I know from experience that hackberries don't live forever. Many of those may be nearing the end of their life. So my question is, if the new trees are going to be a five-year growth, how soon can they be installed? How soon can they be installed?
I think the way it's written now is that they would be installed simultaneous with the, as part of the multifamily development project.
So not right away?
Not right away.
That's unfortunate. Should be sooner than that, in my opinion.
So just as a quick clarifier to your question or your statement, so the, one of the discussion pieces that we had was, if you were to install trees right now, and then as development was to occur, there may be adjustments there that are unintended. And so if you were to plant trees at the second, it may create a situation where, as we're furthering, you know, with the development of Lot Six and Seven, that we may run into unintended circumstances there. Similarly, as you start to, if you were to plant trees that were further out and then a tree was to go down, then you might also have additional gaps that were there that might have been able to be filled in at time of development. So that was one of the conversations that we did have.
And that the planting of the new trees would be, I think, to the planning director's point, would be purposely placed so that all views would be blocked, or predominantly blocked, from whatever is being planned. So if we plant trees now, we don't really know exactly what the form of this development is going to be, so.
I understand. I just think that that line of hackberries is not going to be there very long. The ice storm in my backyard, I mean, I've dealt with dead hackberries and fallen hackberries. They do not have a long lifespan, twenty, twenty-five years.
Is there, so there's, obviously, that's the homeowner's fence. Is there a fence in back of that fence and then the trees?
No, we talked about that as well. The problem is that if we don't want to disrupt the existing tree line, it's going to be very hard to build any kind of fence. So to preserve that vegetation, we want to stay away from it, and so we aren't proposing any major wall or fence along that edge.
I do like that that area behind the existing neighborhood fences is going to be a trail that, so we're bringing additionally, in addition to line of sight being blocked, I'd be excited to have a new trail going in behind my house personally.
Yeah, I mean, this sort of shows us, so we need a fire lane, once the development happens, it needs to be a fire lane that will come around. And so we're proposing that the fire lane be designed as a fire lane that meets the fire code, but also designed as a trail. And so this is.
Like your thirty-five-foot dotted lines?
This is the twenty-five, twenty-six-foot-wide fire lane, half of which would be in some kind of reinforced turf, and half of it would be in concrete to be the trail. And then the additional landscape, just sketched in here beyond what the existing hedgerow is, to help screen the views.
I looked at this, and I just love this design. I'd love, I was recently in Naples, Florida, and visited a brand-new Alamo Drafthouse in Naples, Florida, that is in an area of Naples that is just so like this, and I was going, oh, our new downtown needs to draft an Alamo Drafthouse to come on in. One thing, I talked about this in our other previous work session, is rainwater collection. I don't know if there's any ability to do any of that off of any of these structures, but that would certainly help with ongoing drought and being able to deal with our landscaping, make it healthy.
That's a good point. I think we had that built into our.
It's an encouragement.
Yeah, it was an encouragement.
Okay, good.
Any comments?
I was kind of wondering, just in general, I don't know if it's been decided yet. I mean, like, the domain and stuff is managed by private companies, and like, how is this area planned to be kind of managed and operated? Is it going to be something that's run by the city or run by a third party?
Good evening, Commissioner. So part of this project is that it's a public-private partnership, and so in Phase One, we're
working with Griffin Swinerton, and they brought on our amazing consultants, and I don't think Jim was introduced, so Jim Adams with McCann Adams Design Studio. So our goal is to work through a ground lease process with our master developer currently for Phase One, which is that twelve thousand square feet that Michael referenced. We have our legal team helping us and our financial consultants helping us with how to do Phase Two, and so we are currently working through how those documents might work. That's not an element of the PUD, but something that we're being very mindful of as we work through completion of Phase One and then transitioning into Phase Two.
So that would be on the table for someone like a Simon Properties or something like that, would be?
Potentially, there's opportunities, so the city, our goal is to continue owning the land. We would have for the other more private facilities, to have a property owners association to help manage the property, as well as help to program some of those other elements that are outside or in addition to the parks functions and programs that you see.
Because I just have something to consider maybe about like the Civic Plaza and stuff, and how that would be used, and making sure that the city would self-control over accessibility and being able to use it for public events that would be, you know, free for people to join, rather than if it was a private company, they might have the ability to say, oh, we're going to charge admission, or, oh, we're going to say we can't do that kind of stuff here.
Right. So the public components that you see on the site is the Civic Plaza, the rec center, City Hall, and all of the green space that surrounds it. The city ownership is a benefit from, from a development perspective where they don't hold the land, and so that gives that great opportunity, but also the opportunity, which we don't normally have in other development, to be able to have that control of programming and use of space.
That's great. Thank you.
I did want to take a quick second to maybe dignify the comment that we got from the audience here tonight about. from the audience here tonight about traffic flow, if you don't mind. I know it's not directly related to what we're reviewing this evening with the PUD, but I do know that's a topic of interest. The signalization of 685.
Are you?
No, I'm sorry, I'm asking for a question.
So I know that these, there will be signal at Main Street, and as properties come in, there will be traffic impact analysis that will determine the appropriateness of additional materials needed to, to have that.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All right, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Move to approve. Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you all. All right, moving on then in the agenda. We have one item on the discuss and consider portion this evening. Item five. Rescheduled from our last meeting. You had a short commute this time since you moved.
I know. I was just trying to make it happen. I don't know if it's going to happen. My name's Nathan Jones, I'm a planning manager with Planning and Development Services. I am under consideration tonight is a rezoning request for 16544 Cameron Road. So before I kind of get into everything, I just want to go through some background again and just kind of lay out what this presentation is going to look like. As was noted earlier, this was originally scheduled to come with Planning and Zoning Commission for Recommendation in May. It did come in May, and there was a motion to postpone the item to the June 3 meeting. I'll get into some more of that discussion throughout the presentation. But just wanted to give some more context. This is currently located in the ETJ, so it's currently unzoned property, and it's a little unusual for the Planning and Zoning Commission to see a property that's in the ETJ come before you for rezoning. This is actually accompanied by a voluntary petition for annexation. So City Council approved the resolution to initiate the annexation proceedings in May. And then subsequent to that, the item came before, the rezoning request came to the Planning and Zoning Commission in its May meeting. The original plan was then to take the recommendation by PMZ and to stagger that with the annexation, so City Council would see both the annexation and the rezoning request at the same time, essentially to, essentially save a step so that we didn't have to begin annexation proceedings or rezoning proceedings after the annexation step. With the postponement, we're going to have to go back and re-notify for the rezoning request for the public hearing for City Council. Currently, I think we have that, we're slated to take public hearing in the first rezoning, or the public hearing in the first reading of the rezoning ordinance to the June 25th City Council meeting. And then at that point, both the second reading of the annexation ordinance and the second reading of the rezoning ordinance will align again at the July 9th meeting. And I should also note that between the previous meeting and this, City Council approved an ordinance on first reading to initiate, to begin to, to complete the annexation process. At the previous meeting, so the way this, this will, the way that I'm going to kind of outline this discussion is I'm going to essentially go through my presentation as I originally proposed it, and then highlight some changes that have occurred between now and the previous meeting. At the previous meeting, there were some concerns raised about the land use plan, and just kind of the, there were some additional questions that were raised. And so I'm going to go through what I had originally, or what was originally proposed, show how some of the changes were made. After the meeting, applicant reached out to city staff and presented a new kind of land use plan in an, in an attempt to respond to some of the concerns that were raised. At this stage, we're just going to present the information that was originally presented, and then highlight some of the changes that were made. The applicant is also here as well, and they'll follow up my presentation with their own presentation and go through the changes that they, that they're proposing.
Quick question. Did the City Council have the option of taking an actual rezoning? Did they just postpone, or?
No, City Council hasn't postponed any item. City Council cannot take, take up action on a zoning request without a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So because there was no recommendation, we could not take anything to City Council for approval, although they did move forward with the first reading of the annexation ordinance.
Okay.
So just as a, kind of a, this is kind of where the slides will differ from my original presentation last week. But summary of the request, it's approximately 150 acres. This is the original layout that was initially proposed. The site is located generally along Cameron Road and Fox Grove. It's this odd L-shaped tract with significant amount of floodplain in the back. As I mentioned, it's going through the annexation process. It's not currently platted, so it's 150 acres of unplatted land. And the request is to rezon to neighborhood services, single-family mixed-use, single-family residential, and park facilities and open space. So you notice here, initially applicant had proposed neighborhood services along the frontage with Cameron, and then two 20-acre SFMU zoning districts that were split down the middle. There's an LCRA, I believe it's, I don't think, actually think it's LCRA, but there's a large easement that bisects the property. So along that easement, they had proposed SFR zoning to separate out the two SFMU zoning districts, the two 20-acre tracks, with the single-family residential located in the back, and then parks, facilities, and open space located inside the floodplain area. Here's an image of the changes that are now being proposed. You'll notice that the neighborhood services district has been expanded to the east to become adjacent with the eastern property line. The single-family mixed-use zoning district has been combined instead of two 20-acre tracks. It's now proposed to be one 40-acre district. And that little leg that runs along that western edge connects to Cameron Road again to satisfy the SFMU requirement that it fronts on a, on a collector road or higher. And again, I'll kind of go into more of the details and specifics about what each of these districts require and what they, what they kind of mean in the rest of my presentation. And then finally, the single-family residential remains mostly intact in the back. And then parks, facilities, and open space again along the, along, there's no changes proposed to that parks, facilities The property is, as I mentioned, currently located in the ETJ, primarily surrounded by, by other properties located within ETJ. The city of Austin's ETJ is actually on the other side of Cameron Road to the south. To the north, and then further to the west is city of Flugerville's 1849 Park and the future expansion of 1849 Park. And then Carmel East is north of that. The Aspire Flugerville 2040 Plan calls this area out as traditional neighborhood and parks, facilities, and open space. A little bit about the neighborhood, traditional neighborhood, future land use. Again, when you're thinking about future land uses, this is Hope's and Dreams' highest and best use of what the comprehensive plan calls for this area. You see two charts. One is the compatibility of new uses and building types, and then another is just a mix of overall uses. It's not necessarily saying that each individual project needs to meet this mix of uses, but at the end of the 2040 timeline, generally when we're looking at this at a high, you know, 50,000-foot view, there will eventually be these mixes of uses. As far as the compatibility chart, you see that cluster subdivisions, single-family small lot, accessory dwelling units, townhouses, duplexes, triplex slash fourplex, bungalow, and cottage court are all primarily, they're all considered appropriate residential uses. Again, kind of getting to that mixing middle housing type. As far as non-residential and mixed-use, it calls for neighborhood scale mixed-use, neighborhood office and commercial, neighborhood shopping centers, and then civic and recreational area. This is the parks and open space, future land use. No surprise here, calls for civic and recreational uses. So in this phase, I'll go through again, kind of the, by detail, the initial proposal, and then my next slide will show how they made changes. The Neighborhood Services zoning district, again, is our lace intense commercial district. It's really intended to provide for the, provide commercial uses that support neighborhoods. So these are the day-to-day kind of shopping needs that a neighborhood would need. I have some of the, some of the uses that are allowed by right. And here, you know, we're looking at minor dry cleaning, office space, medical or office, professional services, barber shops, beauty shops, nail salons, retail services, restaurants with limitations. I think those limitations are related to the drive-through requirements. But again, you see, kind of corner store neighborhood service type uses are permitted by right in the Neighborhood Services district. Here you see, as initially proposed, it's kind of divided on both sides by single-family mixed-use legs that come down and touch Cameron Road. But again, here, they've extended the Neighborhood Services district to connect to the adjacent property. The next zoning district is the single-family mixed-use zoning district. This is, as has been mentioned already, an interesting zoning district. There are a few different things to keep in mind when we're talking about the SFMU zoning district. The first is that there is a, a requirement that between, any development between zero and 20 acres can have just one single use within the mixed-use zoning district. However, once you go between 20 and 40 acres, there's a requirement that there's additional land uses, and those are residential land uses. So instead of the requirement being that there's just single-family detached, which is a use permitted by right, there would be a requirement that there would be single-family attached or single-family detached. But there has to be a mix of at least two different residential design types. It also allows for some commercial uses. Those commercial uses are required to be integrated into residential uses. So this, you can think of kind of a vertical mixed-use, so commercial on the bottom floor with maybe a residential apartment on the top floor. And here, again, as I already noted, that originally was proposed for two 20-acre tracks, and then the SFR running down that easement with the two legs that touch Cameron Road. That's been adjusted to one 40-acre tract, and it's removed the eastern leg that connected to Cameron Road while still maintains, still maintaining the one connection to Cameron Road, which again satisfies the requirement that it fronts on to a collector. Here, there's not really very many changes proposed to the residential zoning district, or single-family residential zoning district. I will note that it's, this zoning district is intended for large master plan developments. There's some unique factors and site design factors that go along with single-family residential. And here you see, there aren't very many changes proposed, just a few changes proposed to the edge with the single-family And then finally, no changes are proposed to the parks, facilities, and open space zoning district that's located along the floodplain. So staff reviewed the request in light of the comprehensive plan and found that specifically the neighborhood services and SFMU zoning districts allow commercial uses that are called for by the comprehensive plan. So those are going to be neighborhood servicing, neighborhood services, those kind of lace, light intensity, commercial uses that can be integrated into residential component. And then similarly, the housing types that are allowed by right in the SFMU and SFR do as close as our code can come to propose, to allowing a missing middle housing type that's also called for by the comprehensive plan. So with that, staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation here as well, if they would like to come up and present.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Brandon Hammond, I'm with Meritage Homes, Vice President of Land Development for the Austin Division. And I have with me Tara Thompson. She's the Director of Development for the Austin Division of Meritage Homes. I think Nathan did a great job explaining our initial request, feedback we had received at the previous hearing, some adjustments we made to our zoning plan, our land use plan, I should say. And then we just wanted to supplement, we felt like supplementing his presentation with our own, just to kind of, one, introduce Meritage Homes, two, go over just some specifics as far as the adjustments we made, and three, to kind of outline what our current plan is, even though we're early on in the zoning stage, what our proposed development looks like at this point in time. So about Meritage Homes, we're a recognized public home builder in the U.S., with divisions from coast to coast. You know, these are just some highlights of, of awards and accolades that we've received over the years. And not so much in an order here, but there are several here that emphasize the energy efficiency component in terms of what we bring in our homes. And those are sort of identified here by the various awards, Builder of the Year from Green Home Builder, it's a publication, some other awards for Energy Star, et cetera. This is something that we like to set our part, to set ourselves apart. Of our homes. Avid, it's a customer survey component to the, the home building, purchasing, and closing process. And this is something that we stress within not only our division, but the company, and it's something that our division here in Austin has been recognized for, or I should say, eight, eight different Avid awards since 2015. So not only are we an energy-efficient builder, but we're also connected with the community. As an example here with the Hurstone Builder Humanitarian Award, this is something that is, builders are recognized, or entities are recognized for commitment to public service. So, you know, one of the examples is we're, we have a partnership with Operation Homefront. In fact, we're going to be building a home in one of our communities in south central Texas later this year, and donating that home to a veteran. And this is something we do every year throughout the country. So just as an example of our partnership with the local community. So as Nathan had mentioned, he kind of went over all the changes, just some things I wanted to highlight with the proposed zoning. You know, as Nathan mentioned, there were some concerns at the previous hearing about how SFMU was bifurcated by that gas easement. The intent really was to, to respect the gas easement, but I think the concerns were valid. And so we went ahead and just consolidated those two SFMU districts into one, one district, overlaying that, that gas pipeline easement that bisects up the middle. And then there were some adjustments to the NS and SFR to accommodate that change on the SFMU zoning acreage. Otherwise, as Nathan alluded to, we agree, we feel like this, this proposed zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. You know, the comprehensive plan, at least for traditional neighborhood, I'm sorry, the future land uses of traditional neighborhood and parks and open space, calls for mostly single-family use on smaller lots, with a small amount of neighborhood supporting retail and office employment. SFR, just a couple highlights of, obviously, this is probably things that our commission's familiar with, but minimum side acreage of 10 acres, and having a mix of lot sizes, just based on the overall acreage itself. SFMU, as Nathan alluded to, we can go up to 40 acres as long as we're providing two different uses. SFMU typically consists of small lot detached or attached product, and with direct access to a major thoroughfare. The NS Neighborhood Service, you know, for use by residents, neighborhood areas, for day-to-day needs, it's in addition also located on a thoroughfare. And then the public facilities and open space, providing about 38 acres of that with this proposed zoning, proposed land use plan, and the intent to preserve and enhance public and private open spaces, while providing recreational opportunities and pedestrian corridors, with integration of back-and-back trails and floodplain areas. So with that said, I was going to turn it over to Tara, and she can kind of go over some of the highlights of what we have proposed at this point in time.
Thank you. Tara Thompson with Meritage Homes. So our current plans are for the Neighborhood Services, as you can see, to be fronting along Cameron Road. Our plan is to locate most of the larger lots in the rear along the banks of Willbarger Creek. Creek, with smaller lots within the transition area with direct access to Cameron Road. The internal pedestrian connectivity that was, is planned will be just that, the connectivity of trails to, you know, both internally to other systems externally. And also, we'll be providing access to the public, the public facility tract as well. Internal, we'll see multiple pocket parks are also in our plans within the subdivision itself. And then dedication of land for a fire station is also something that we have been in serious discussions with the Fire Department EMS. The amenity center that we plan to be doing as far as the private side of amenities would include a pool, a playground, pickleball courts, and then, as you can see, there's an abundance of the acreage for the public facilities land use as well.
Thank you. So with that, that concludes our supplemental presentation. So I'm assuming at this point we can take questions or allow you to take the mic. Should we stay up here?
Yeah. You all can. Thank you. Chair. Questions? There's, so we have already fulfilled our obligation for a public comment period, but I did want to just, because I believe council has to fulfill theirs as well. If there is anyone wishing to speak, would certainly be happy to accept a public comment. Seeing as there is none, then we're okay. Commissioners?
Yeah, in general, I think I voiced a concern over the disputing of the SFMU and sort of the stated definition of SFMU being kind of a 20-acre or intended to be 20 acres or less. And I can see that there's an ability to do 40 acres if there's different types of development on, I guess, the two 20-acre halves. So what would differentiation is being, is being planned to accommodate that requirement?
At this point, the plan is to provide two different uses as outlined in the city's code. And when I mentioned, or when Tara had alluded to the transition area, and I'll go back to this exhibit, the transition area is the SFMU. So it's transitioning from the neighborhood services to the quote-unquote larger lots and the SFR in the back. So with that, within that SFMU and combining these and, or the previous land use plan that had two distinct 40-acre tracks, 19.9 and 20, combining those two, we're planning to bring two different uses within that SFMU.
Okay. Well, what would the differences between those two uses look like? I mean, not necessarily like, oh, you know, say exactly what's going to, this one's going to be, but like generally speaking, like, maybe it's more the question for planning is like, what's the minimum requirement for that differentiation to be able to say, okay, you can do 40 instead of 20?
Well, and with all due respect to Meritage here, this obviously would run with the land, so it's regardless of what their project is or what their intent is. Any future development would have to comply with these zoning standards. And so what that would mean is that any preliminary plan that comes in for this area would have to comply and provide multiple types of uses so they can, as I mentioned, it's just two because the district is greater than 20 acres. So what we would do is we would look at the uses that are permitted by right, residential uses that are permitted by right.
So residential be one, and then non-residential would be the other?
No, it would be different types of residential uses. So it could be a section that provides for, you know, three, three attached townhomes or more. So that could be kind of a condo townhouse type development proposed and single, traditional single-family detached, or it could be single-family attached of essentially duplexes or attached single-family structures. So it could still stay within the whole essentially single-family. It may look and feel like all single-family, but in reality, the, like if a particular lot came in as a condo lot, and it may, the actual housing type may look single-family upon just looking at it, but the actual ownership and residential type, we would consider it to be, you know, that would be a distinct residential type. But they would be required to show in their preliminary plan a multiple, you know, more than one residential type.
Are they required to be roughly equal proportions, or can they do 90% one and one little structure on the side?
Yeah, it's just two. It's 90% one, 10% the other.
Can bring that up when you talk to the consultants about the code updates.
Yeah, that'll be good. Kind of loophole there. Okay. Yeah, and I guess just more generally speaking for us, I, I mean, that having that kind of density that far out feels, I don't know, a little out of sync, but, you know, in the, going with the 40-acre SFMU, it seems like the code's intended for it to be more like a 20-acre, but, I mean, at this point, I think they've satisfied the minimums. So that was my kind of main concern the last time.
Okay, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I agree.
All right. You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. All right, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:59 PM. Thank you all.